Heavenly Father, as we meet to serve our community, may we use our resources wisely and well to represent all members of our community fairly and to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future and the rights and needs both individuals and the community. Bless our city officials in their deliberations today that they may act wisely and well. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some recognitions and acknowledgements here today, which I'm very pleased to mention.
Mayor, if you'll allow me just a moment to the audience. This is John Wayne Cato, one of the most highly decorated soldiers from Vietnam in North Carolina, so of Gassman County. John is here for a reason. Out of compassion of his heart, he came to the city about three years ago upset that when you went to Greenwood Cemetery, there was not an American flag out there or a flagpole. We had one many, many years ago. It was hidden behind the war monument, but you couldn't ever see it flying. So out of the kindness of his heart, John coughed up 2,000 bucks of his own money to erect an American flag and a pole. And he also put it on the western slope of Greenwood. And he also offered up one of his family plot, cemetery plots, to mount this flag. So he's compassionate about our country and his flag. So with that, Mayor, I believe you have something special for John Cato.
I do, I really do. This is a proclamation recognizing June the 3rd, which is today's date, 2019, as John Wayne Cato Appreciation Day in the City of Belmont. How about that? Whereas John Wayne Cato was born in 1946 in Charlotte and raised in Belmont. And whereas at the age of 19, John Wayne Cato was drafted into the U.S. Army Infantry and was part of a six-man killer team on search-and-destroy missions in Vietnam. And whereas during what turned out to be their final mission, his team was ambushed and John Wayne Cato was shot five times. And whereas John Wayne Cato attributes his survival to a tank operator who maneuvered his tank over John until additional help arrived. Amazing. Whereas John Wayne Cato has been awarded a Silver Star, a Medal of Valor for shooting his way out of a fight carrying a wounded soldier. He was awarded one of the highest North Carolina National Guard Medals for Community Service and is a three-time Purple Heart recipient. And whereas this makes John Wayne Cato one of the most decorated veterans in Gassman County and Vietnam veterans to ever serve in the National Guard. Now therefore, I draw the pardon, Mayor of the City of Belmont, North Carolina, hereby declare June 3rd as John Wayne Cato Appreciation Day in the City of Belmont, North Carolina, and urge all citizens to thank John Cato for his dedicated and honorable service to our country. And witness thereof, I have hereby set my hand and cause the skill of the City of Belmont and North Carolina to be affixed on this third day of June 2019. Congratulations. We're also going to give him a key to the City of Belmont. Thank you. Thank all of you.
Thank you.
Well, if it hadn't been for my buddies, I wouldn't be here. I should have been dead.
John, we thank you for your service.
Yeah, I was raised on Armstrong Ford Road. And when I lived here, or raised here, that was cornfields and wheat fields. Same thing with South Point Road. Yeah, we step out of backyard and go hunting.
We thank you for the American flag.
Next, we have a proclamation recognizing July 6th, 2019, as Peter Monroe Stowe Day in Belmont. Anybody from the family want to come on up here? You're all welcome to come on up. Even so. Now, I'll read this to you. How you doing? Good, good scene. Whereas Peter Monroe Stowe was a seventh child born to Neil Stowe Senior and Sylvia Wood Stowe and was born in the Riverbend Township of Gassman County in 1867. And whereas Peter Stowe was the father of eight children and lived in Gassman County until 1924. And whereas in 1916, back-to-back hurricanes triggered a massive flood that caused water damage to surge and reach an estimated 45.5 feet, causing massive damage to the areas surrounding the Catawba River. Great flood of 1960. And whereas six stranded men had been in the raging floodwaters clinging to a tree when Peter and his friends arrived with their boat that had just been made by other Gassman County residents to assist in the rescue. Whereas during the second trip to saving the remaining three men, their boat taps off and Peter held onto it with his legs so it didn't wash away. Whereas bloodied and bruised, they pulled the boat out of the water and were able to get themselves and the other three men back to safety after 19 hours in the water. And whereas on July 18th, hundreds of black people drove or walked to a Belmont Brickyard to salute the heroes. Now therefore, I draw the pardon, Mayor of the City of Belmont, North Carolina, to declare July 6th, 2019, as Peter Monroe Stowe Day in the City of Belmont, North Carolina, urging all citizens to celebrate the heroic acts of Peter Monroe Stowe as his family celebrates him and their Stowe family heritage at their 50th family reunion. And in witness thereof, I have hereby set my hand, cause skill of the City of Belmont and North Carolina to be affixed this third day of June 2019. So congratulations. He was a real hero as far as that goes. Right there, if you want to get together, some family, we'll get a photo. Let's go take a picture.
Can we squeeze a little bit more? Or hold on, let me get back. Here we go. Okay. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. You'll get a pic, oh, you bet. Like him. Take a picture. Go ahead. Thank you so much. You bet. Thank you. Thank him. Yeah. Thank you. Good to see you. All right. Let's proceed to. Anybody making a motion to approve the considered agenda? Got a motion to approve the considered agenda? Got a second? All in favor, say aye. 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 Public comment. I have one person signed up for public comment, and that is Chris Beck. So we've got three minutes to state your case. Say your name, address, come on up to podium up here. Okay?
My name is Chris Beck. I live at 502 Julia Avenue. And I have spoken to Mr. Mr. Turner and Mr. Adrian Miller about the speed on Julia and accidents. I don't know where all this been, that has been over the last 10 years, but I do know that our police chief is going to talk about that tonight. But my thing is that we need a few more speeding signs that start at the beginning at each side of the road and some children playing signs at 500 and 200 houses that they do have little children there and that do play in the front yardage. So my thing is that they just need, we need to slow it down somehow. And I understand that there is some issues coming up about that, but I'm just tired of people running through my yard, to be honest with you. You know, Mr. Turner had a little documentary about what had happened two weeks ago and at 6:00 in the morning. But the thing is, I know, I know that the police officer can't be there 24 hours a day, but still, and they've done studies and stuff, but most of the accidents that's taken place are in or after 10:00 to 6:00 in the morning. But you know, but there's no police officers there at that time, you know, or we don't know about them. I'm not saying they ain't, okay? But you know, but we do know that they are out there and we just want a little bit more stability on that road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I've got to grant some looks on that road, too. All right. We'll move on to item number two on the agenda, which is the presentation of the MDP 2019.04 Belmont Abbey Residence Halls, a request to construct two new residence halls within the Belmont Abbey campus.
Thank you. And we were having some technical difficulties with our system, so we're down to one screen. So we do have to, everybody get over Jamie as she's presenting and make her really nervous. But I would like to turn it over to Jamie Mendez of the Planning Department.
Thank you. So as Adrian said, my name is Jamie and I am the planning tech for the planning and zoning department. I am here to present major development plan 2019.04, and this is the Belmont Abbey Residence Halls project. So the request for this project is the applicants are requesting approval to develop two five-story residence halls within Belmont Abbey's campus. This is an internal project and it's located on Abbott Walter Commons Drive, right across from the baseball field and next to existing residence halls. So background on the project, this is a by right development. The reason we are taking it through this process, though, is because it involves buildings that exceed 30,000 square feet in gross floor area. Currently, the Abbey has residence halls that are operating at a triple occupancy and the goal is to reduce these halls down to double occupancy. Each residence hall will add 64 units, which is a total of 128 beds. So both buildings together will add 256 new spaces for current students. The zoning of this campus is institutional campus development, also known as ICD. The intent of this district is to allow for continued and future use, expansion, and new development of academic and religious campuses. On the slide, you can see we have some performance standards that are specific to this zoning jurisdiction. So there is a max building height allowed is five stories or 60 feet. The applicants are proposing five-story buildings. And then the setbacks, I added a note on here that says the LDC states that internal setbacks and location of parking areas shall be set during the review process. So the allowed setbacks are really measured from the district boundary. There is a front setback of 80 feet and side setback of 25 feet. Since this is an internal project, we're kind of setting different setbacks and they are proposing a 100, greater than 100-foot right-side setback from the St. Benedict Residence Hall and then 16 feet from the existing parking spots. Tree protection, the applicant is proposing minimal impact to the existing tree line. The existing street trees will be removed to allow for curb-getters, sidewalk, and the refacing of the existing parking spots so that they are ADA compliant. And then a full landscape plan will be required and reviewed at the construction review phase. So on the slide, you can see I put Xs on the trees that will be affected, and that's really just to make the parking spots ADA compliant. So street design, parking, and traffic, there are no proposed changes to the existing streets and access roads for the campus, and the college does not plan to increase student population. So with that, no additional parking spots are being required. Again, the existing parking will be modified to meet the ADA parking requirements. And then we also consulted with our traffic consultants at Kinley Horn, and they verified that a traffic impact analysis or TIA is not required for this project. Parking, I went ahead and printed this off to include in your packets. Currently, there are 496 designated residential parking spaces, and they did a, they pulled numbers for us from fall of 2018, and there are currently 328 out of the 833 residential students that had parking passes for that semester. So that left the campus with a surplus of 168 spots for residential students only. And then they went ahead and pulled the total spots for the main campus, so this is not the sacred parking, this is across the street. There are 1,077 parking spaces, and this includes parking for residents, commuters, staff, and then there's an undesignated parking lot as well. So total parking passes, including staff, residents, commuters, and then an average number of visitors Monday through Friday, was 879, and this left the campus with a total parking surplus of 198 spots. Watershed and utilities, the applicant will be required to submit a watershed protection permit application, but they do not have to go before the watershed protection board for review. They are still considered at low density, so the ordinance provisions do not apply to this project. City water and sewer are available to service the project. The fire department and public works, my proceedings, they have already been kind of testing, but they're going to continue reviewing the water pressure issues related to the proposed building height of these buildings. The city engineer is requiring the installation of a permanent emergency backup generator at the Abbey Booster Pump Station, and then a lighting plan will also be required for review at the construction review phase. Architectural design, the applicant is proposing five-story brick buildings with stone axles. The goal is to match the already existing buildings on the campus. And then these are some of the features that they built into their design, so they're featuring the traditional cathedral faces on the ends of the buildings, as well as a focus on vertical orientation. And then they also featured the trinary arched entry sequence at the front of the buildings. So the, for the MDP process and staff recommendation, staff has reviewed the schematic plan and finds it to be in compliance with the requirements of the LDC. And planning board also received the request and unanimously recommended approval by city council. We'll also have the applicant and representative of Belmont Abbey if you have any questions.
We have two gentlemen here that, if anybody has any questions for that, we can ask Tom Mark and Anthony Cal. Anybody have any questions they want to ask them about the project?
Just that the building heights are permitted by right?
Yes, sir.
These guys, this is going to be in the addition? Are you getting rid of any old dormitories? You're going to repurpose some or just new students?
Well, really, the remaining dorms will stay. These dorms are really for the overflow. We've got rooms designed for doubles that are triples and some rooms designed to singles or doubles, so we're really just pushing overflow students, residential students in these buildings.
Do we have anything else? Motion to have a public hearing? That's right.
Is this a motion to approve the scheduled?
Got a motion to approve, got a second, all right? All in favor, say aye. Okay. Moves us on to item number three.
So that was like?
Yeah. Okay. We're good, all right. Public hearing on the city budget, 2019, 2020. Got a motion to go to public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Abbott presented down here a while ago.
So thank you. So the general statutes require that we have a public hearing on the proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year, which begin July 1st, 2019, run through June 30th, 2020. So this is the public hearing to go over the budget. Just to, for the benefit of the audience and those listening at home, sort of go over the budget process that we've been using the last several years and specifically that we use this year. So in January of 2019, you had your annual planning retreat where you looked at updating our current five-year budget, and you asked that we stick with the budget that was adopted last year, the five-year rolling plan that you considered last year, and this is basically year two of that, that plan. Staff provided input into the needs of the departments, both to Michelle, our finance director, and to myself. This spring, you held two budget workshops, one in March and one in April. Sometimes we have a third budget workshop, didn't feel like we needed that this year. During the final workshop, you did indicate that you wanted to put, have a public hearing at the June meeting and to put it on the agenda for adoption. And as I mentioned earlier, approved, this budget will be, whatever budget you approve has to go into effect July 1st. So before I get into the details of the budget, I do want to thank Michelle for her hard work. She did the lion's share of the work on the budget this year. She got all the input from the staff, crunched all of the funds. The tourism fund is $105,000 this year, and I'll get into each of these. Stormwater fund is just over, just under $800,000. Water and sewer fund is over $10 million. Capital reserve for the utility fund is 3.3 million, and the general fund is 14.2 billion. So the key takeaway is for what our residents and business owners are going to be paying this year. The budget keeps the property tax rate flat. It keeps our water and sewer rates flat. It does increase the solid waste, excuse me, reduces the solid waste fee by $2 a month, but it increases the stormwater fee by $2 a month. So there's no net increase to your water and sewer bill unless you use more water and sewer services. We do have a fee schedule that's in the next agenda item with a lot of user fees that are paid for primarily by development-related activities, and those will have various increases. So our smallest fund is a tourism fund. That's up from $95,000 this year to $105,000. That is paid for by the 3% city occupancy tax, primarily from the Hampton Inn. That has to be spent by general statute on tourism-related activities, bringing more people to Belmont, sleeping at the Hampton Inn. The Tourism Development Authority has control over how that funding is used, as long as it complies with the general statutes. As we just mentioned, the watershed review board will have the Hilton Home Suites that hopefully will break ground this year, and when that's occupied, this will obviously increase the funding available for the Tourism Authority. But for the upcoming fiscal year, it's $105,000. The stormwater budget, as I mentioned in last year's budget presentation, our stormwater budget is very minimal. We're basically maintaining the street sweeper and trying to do some very small in-house projects, and we just did not have funding to do the capital projects that we need for stormwater. And because since we adopted our stormwater utility fee of $3 per month, we've not increased it at all, but the cost of everything has gone up. So I am recommending that you increase the stormwater fee from $3 a month to $5 a month. That's a 74% increase, but we need it. It's only going to pay for six projects over the next five years. And again, our stormwater utility fund only covers drainage issues, it's stormwater issues on public property. We don't get into private drainage issues. The water and sewer fund is our second-largest fund. We have the same basic operations. We're providing clean water and returning clean water back to the river. So we are not recommending any rate increases on either the base rates or the usage rates from the current year. The rate structure, and Michelle and Chuck and I looked at this, the current rate structure we have covers all of our operating costs, our personnel costs, our regular capital costs like trucks and vehicles and equipment, and the debt service within the fund. We are estimating about a 7% increase in water sales and 5% increase in sewer charges due to our just natural growth in the customer base, plus our big users are using more because the economy is good, so certainly appreciate to have that. We are adding some more employees in this fund to help cover the maintenance of our expanding system. The reason this fund is so much bigger this year than in previous years is because we're now at a point that we're able to actually build some of these large, expensive capital projects in our utility system, such as the South Point Water Storage Tank and Booster Pump Station. So in order to pay for that, we've got approximately $10 million or so in our capital reserve fund and the utilities, utility fund, and so we're going to pull $3.3 million out of that to pay for some of these large capital projects we were planning on. Here are the budgets for the various components of the water and sewer fund. You can see capital is actually going to be our biggest fund this year. We're going to spend more on capital than we'll anything else in the water and sewer fund. So I'm sorry if we're digging up yards and inconveniencing, but these are much-needed improvements that will help our system. Our revenue sources, water sales, just to help us with the growing demands of our town. We've increased our funding for capital from $1.6 to $1.8 billion, implementing the five-year CFP plan for this year. We talked about taking care of employees. We've got a 2% cost of living adjustment that will be effective July 1st. And then, as we did this year, we have a pool of up to 3% of salaries for merit. I think they gave you the, what we did last year, most people either got a 1% or 2% increase for merit, and that's totally performance-based. The good news that we have for the budget this year is that our health insurance decreased 13%, and I want to thank Deborah for her work as HR Director on really getting down into the weeds of our contracts with our healthcare providers and our brokers. We were with the League years ago, didn't have a broker. We got away from them because we were getting double-digit increases every year. We had a broker to help us facilitate the healthcare market. As we found out, the broker was providing a good service, but at a premium. And so Deborah was able to negotiate down lower fees this year. We're going back with the League municipalities. Their rates came in a lot lower and we're not using a broker, so that's the savings of about $50,000. So I appreciate that, and that's money that we have to spend and other things that we can spend on. And for the first time since we can recall, we're actually budgeting money to put into our savings account. Years ago, we used to budget an appropriation from the fund balance to just help balance the budget. Sometimes we had to use it, sometimes we didn't, depending on how the year went. But this year, we're actually being very intentional. We're budgeting $400,000 to go into the savings account this year. We're currently at about 30% of our fund balance that is undesignedated, that's spendable. We want to get that up to 40% so that emergencies happen. We have some big-ticket items such as the betterments of the Wilkes-Bilhard Bridge, the IED High Bridges. We need to have money available to spend, plus storms happen in the fall. We need to be able to pay for that. A couple charts on where the money's going in the general fund. This is by functional area, so this is all departments combined, salaries and benefits, personnel costs is 46% of the budget. That's down slightly from the 47% that we talked about in the workshop, and that's primarily because of the reduced healthcare costs. You see operating expense at 27%. I mentioned our debt service was, our goal was to stay at or below 12%. This year is 9%. So that, we're decreasing from 11% this year to 9% next year. Capital expenses were 13% of the budget, so that's a good number. And then you see in the purple, the top 3% of the budget is going in our savings account. So that will be a start of a trend we see over the next several years. You had asked about how, you know, the percentage of the budget that goes to those areas, how that has tracked over time. We're able to pull out actual expenditures over the last 10 or 12 years. You can see that our personnel costs have gone anywhere from about 47% to 56%. We did cost allocate some of our general fund positions, did also work in the water and sewer fund, so that has reduced our percentage of the budget that's going to personnel. What I'm really excited about is this middle line that's red here, and it's red here. That's our operating budget. So you can see we're, I interpret this as we're operating more efficiently. 13%, and I want to thank Deborah for her work as HR Director on really getting down into the weeds of our contracts with our healthcare providers and our brokers. We were with the league years ago, we didn't have a broker, we got away from them because we were getting double-digit increases every year. We had a broker to help us facilitate the healthcare market. As we found out, the broker was providing a good service, but at a, a premium. And so, Deborah was able to negotiate down lower fees this year. We're, we're going back with the league municipalities, their, their rates came in a lot lower, and we're not using a broker. So, that's the savings of about $50,000. So, I appreciate that, and that's, that's money that we have to spend and other things that we can spend on. And for the first time since we can recall, we're actually budgeting money to put into our savings account. Years ago, we used to, to budget an appropriation from the fund balance to just help balance the budget. Sometimes we had to use it, sometimes we didn't, depending on how the, the year went. But this year, we're actually being very intentional, we're budgeting $400,000 to go into the savings account. We're currently at about 30% of our fund balance that is undesignedated, that's expendable. We want to get that up to 40%, so that emergencies happen. We have some, some big-ticket items such as the betterments of the Wilkson Boulevard Bridge, the ID5 Bridges. We need to have money available to spend, plus storms happen in the fall, and we need to be able to pay for that. A couple of charts on where the money's going in the general fund. This is by functional area, so this is all departments combined, salaries and benefits, personnel costs is 46% of the budget. That's down slightly from the 47% that we talked about in the workshop, and that's primarily because of the, the reduced healthcare costs. You see operating expense at 27%. I mentioned our debt service was, our, our goal was to stay at or below 12%. This year is 9%, so that, we're decreasing from 11% this year to 9% next year. Capital expenses were 13% of the budget, so that, that's a good number. And then you see in the, the purple, the top 3% of the budget is going in our savings account. So, hopefully that will be a start of a trend we see over the next several years. You had asked about how, how, you know, the percentage of the budget that goes to those areas, how that has tracked over time. We're able to pull out actual expenditures over the last 10 or 12 years. You can see that our personnel costs have gone anywhere from about 47% to 56%. We did cost allocate some of our general fund positions, did also work in the water and sewer fund, so that has reduced our percentage of the budget that's going to personnel. What I'm really excited about is this middle line, it's red here, and it's red here, that's our operating budget. So, you can see we're, we're, I interpret this as we're operating more efficiently. We're obviously doing a lot more stuff than we used to do, and we're not spending any more of the budget to do it. And that purple line is our capital. You see the spike in 2010, I believe that was the purchase of the, the property on Gate of the Road, so that's sort of artificially inflated that capital for that year, that was $1 million. But we were getting down into 5% or 6% of the budget going to capital, and it showed. Now, we're at 13%. Here's a long list of projects that are in the hopper, you've put in the budget, primarily focusing on downtown, on our streets, sidewalks, and our park system, but also making sure that we have, you know, we've got the Public Works Building that'll be our municipal center, and that's under construction now. Got to make sure we have money to pay for all the office furniture and the fixtures in there, so that money's included in, in the budget. And then, another goal of the Parks and Rec Board is to build a recreation center. The master plan is recommend we build that, and was essentially the front yard of the Public Works Building across from the Kevin Lofton River Park. We've got money and the upcoming budget to start doing those architectural fees and engineering fees, so that we can get started with, with construction for that in probably two years. That's something we've only talked about for 20 years. We're, we've talked it enough, and we're going to start doing. Here's just a breakdown of, of the general fund budget by each of the departments. You see public safety is, as always, is the biggest part of the budget. Our revenue sources in the general fund, our property taxes have hovered between 50 and 55% of the budget, it's 60% of the budget of public. Sales taxes is 16%, that's up a little bit, opposed to the performance this year and last And then, the auto taxes and utility franchise taxes are, are second biggest, and we feel like that's going to be the platinum. So, the reason that the percentage of, of our general fund revenue is higher this year than it has been in the past is because revaluation occurred, as, as you all know. County did the revaluation last year, and it was effective January 1st of this year. We had some uncertainty going into the budget season based on appeals. Appeals came in a lot, they had a lot fewer appeals than they were anticipating, and most of those were denied, as I understand it. So, there hasn't been a huge impact of the appeal process that, that we were afraid of. So, the total taxable value of all city, all property within the city that is taxable, so excluding churches and Belmont Avenue and schools, is just over $1.5 billion. That's approximately 23% more than it was last year. But again, that's an average, so some properties increased more than 23%, some increased less than 23%. But it's important to remember that that's not a 23% increase over the value of last year, that's a 23% increase on average over the last revaluation, which was in 2015. So, that's, that's less than a 6% increase each year. So, my house is not being assessed, if it's increasing the value 6% a year, I'm happy with that. The next revaluation that the county has scheduled will be for 2022. So, hopefully, we won't be going as, as long between revals if we've done it in the past, or we don't have these bigger spikes. But you can see in our property tax collection over the last 10 years, 2007 and '08 was a result of a revaluation, we increased 24% then. But after you have that bump from revow, it levels off, and that's just natural growth. So, that's not changing the values of existing properties, that's just adding to the tax base. You see the last revow was 2014 and '15, and we only had a 3% bump. The previous one was 2007, so it had the benefit of the housing boom from the last decade, and then, of course, we had the bust and the recession, and it lagged, and it lagged, and it lagged, and the county stretched out to eight years between revals. But even with that, primarily because of the riverfront properties did not recover from their 2007 peaks, we didn't get really anything out of the last rebound. You can see this year, our property tax collection is up 13.5%. About 8% of that is from the change in the tax rate last year, and about 5% of that is from natural growth. So, you were also asking in the workshop, you know, so revals of property values are up, how does that affect, you know, my neighborhood and such and such neighborhood, Adams Blough or South Point Ridge or Greystone? So, I was able to pull data from the county tax office on the average values of different, clearly defined neighborhoods. We have a lot of areas in town that aren't in the subdivision or clearly defined neighborhoods. So, these, these are some neighborhoods you can hear from and are easily identified. So, here's the average total tax value of both the land and the improvement in various neighborhoods around town. You see our, our, our two highest by, by far, or Reflection Point and South Shore Plain. So, then you figure out what the average tax bill, and again, some are going to be higher, some are going to be lower, but the average tax bill for, for the city, for those different neighborhoods. So, we could, again, the higher the value of the property, the higher the tax bill is going to be, and the lower the value, the lower the tax bill is going to be. The Chronicle Mill neighborhood is, is lower, but that hopefully will change soon as that property gets redeveloped. And since Shelley's here, I just wanted to give you an idea of also what happens. So, we had, this is the total tax value of properties within a neighborhood, but how we design our neighborhoods also affects how much revenue we get from them. So, this is something that I was, it's very interesting that the county also tracks this. This is average tax value per acre. So, so I mentioned that Reflection Point and South Shore have the highest average tax values total, but if you look at value per acre, they're around $200,000 in acres, because you have big lots, and they're spread apart. So, when you're looking at the total acreage, it's sort of common sense, but it's interesting to see the data. Your compact walkable areas, particularly townhomes, the Aberfall Village Townhouses that are now being occupied, those are our most productive. If you just look at an acre land and what you want to produce on it, townhouses are the way to get for that. Not a lot of value overall, but a very efficient use of lands. Just keep that in mind as we have to develop opportunities in the future. So, to sum it up, the recommendation is, you know, certainly recommend approval of the budget that we worked hard on. This is the second year of a five-year budget and a five-year plan. We've talked a long time about, you know, what Belmont wants to be, what it needs to be, what level of service we want in our parks and our streets, and, excuse me, infrastructure. We've upgraded a lot of stuff the last couple of years, but all the stuff that we want to do to make this a great town and the town we're all proud of and like to show all costs money. So, I think the investments that we're making will pay off. With this, this budget that I'm recommending, invest in our parks, invest in our downtown. It helps with public safety, we talked about Calea earlier, and also invest in economic development, new service, and it's all financing, and it saves money for the future needs that we have by putting money into our, our savings account. Keeps the tax rate flat, it keeps the water and sewer rates flat, and it offsets the stormwater fee and the solid waste fee, which I failed to mention, reducing the solid waste fee from $9 a month to $7 a month. We had our five-year plan for that actually with an increase of $12 a month, but because the revow came in like it did, we're actually able to reduce those fees. And so, I know we've had discussions about taxes versus fees. So, the reduction in the solid waste fee allows the, that fee to pay for about half of the cost of the service that we provide for solid waste, which is garbage, recycling, yard waste, and all kinds of pickup. So, half is paid for by your taxes and half is paid for by your solid waste fee. So, so there's no net increase in the fees that most residents will pay unless you're going to go out and build a house or, or develop a property. So, I recommend that you stick with the five-year plan and recommend that you approve this budget. If you have any questions about it, I'll be happy to answer.
I'd just to comment if you would, the quality of service you receive from our fire department has certainly helped in a number of situations. If you'd just talk about Calea for a moment for our audience.
With the business owners downtown of establishing a municipal service district, basically they assess a fee or a tax in that area to fund, you know, their, their wants and desires. So, it's not necessarily just based on the lack of the taxpayer. I think that's reasonable to ask them to go ahead and vet that. This thing's been bounced around for a while, I talked about with John Church, he went to Shelby and the Davidson, talked to them, they have a very robust program, it's earned a lot of money for them to do the projects and be self-sufficient, I guess. So, I would put that to council, is that, you know, pass the budget without doubling this, give them an opportunity to, to vet this with their members, see if it has any legs, if they're willing to go ahead and be self-sustaining to some extent, and if not, then revisit that and then for approval.
Yes, and certainly you can, you can do with the budget what, what you choose. So, we increased funding for the Main Street Program from $23,000 to $46,000. So, if we want to take that out, then there's $23,000, I don't know where you would want to put that. But my, my involvement with the Main Street Program, they have a, just like you've got your five-year CIP and five-year plan, they have their work plan, and even doubling the money's not going to pay for all the things that they want to do. So, this is, this is a program that is designed to increase economic development in our most prominent area. And I think most people would say that downtown Belmont is sort of the jewel of Belmont and Gaston County, and maybe, you know, is on par with other downtowns that you think about, would you want to get a visit. So, it's, yes, there is the grant program, and I, and I understand your concern about the facade enhancement grant program. That's available for business owners on Main Street and Cataba Street to help rehab some of those old facades and improve the facades. But there's, there's a lot more to what they're doing than just those grants. I, I recommend sticking with the budget, but that's certainly up to the council.
Well, I mean, not, not to belabor the point, but what I would add to that, if you look at the initial mission of the Main Street Program, it was to rehab towns that were dying, you know, where businesses had left and had low occupancy. That's not the case here, we're very robust, and they should be self-sustaining, be able to redo their own facades. But I mean, that's, you know, I'm not going to shoot the whole of the budget, because I think overall it's good budget, it's just philosophically I've got an issue with that. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask them to look into that option of MSD and see if they can sustain themselves at some point. But again, I mean, that would, that would give to council whether they share that view or not.
And I do believe, I'm sorry, I do believe that the Economic Restructuring Committee is, or Economic Telecom is looking at.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about it a lot, and I think one of the challenges that we've had is that when we think about assessing a certain section of the, the Main Street area with an additional tax, it always seems, as you look at the tax revenue, that it's not going to be well-received. So, when we, when we bring up the idea about, and I, and I agree with you, I think it's, we should raise, the, the business people in downtown Main Street should allocate capital to improve and control their own destiny, so to speak. So, it's not just about the city giving us money, it's about the business people saying, let's take control of our future, and let's have capital so we can do things that we want to do. And, but what's happened is that every time we bring it up, it always competes with other tax increases. So, it's never a good idea. So, now that we go through this next tax increase, I think maybe in the next couple of years, it might be a good time to introduce it when we don't have something else competing with it, so to speak. So, and also seeing all the stuff that's going on right now, I think it's, it's a good opportunity. So, we talked about it a lot, and I think we all like the idea to raise capital and to help, you know, build the downtown, and I think it's a good option. In the past, it always kind of gets, it just competes with other tax increases that this, it's not a good idea, let's wait, it's a good idea. So, I think now, in the next couple of years, might be a good idea to, it might, might.
What I'm hearing is like, like, between this tax reevaluation and the next, would be an opportunity to not do the exact right.
Yeah, I think it's a good time now to try and do it, but it's, it's, the timing's probably right to start working harder on it.
I know this is a public comment period, but it's not a decision to be made, but I would say that I support the increase because the, the folks do a lot more than facade grants. There's a lot of things going on, I didn't realize how much they do. There's a lot of volunteer hours, we couldn't afford to pay these folks for what they do. So, I think in order to support them and show our support, I, I agree with doubling the budget. Now, this thing about the, the tax thing, I don't know how much revenue it really will generate. I agree, it's not going to generate as much as what we might think of it, but I think it's two separate issues. I support that group, I think if we cut their budget, that's the wrong thing to do.
I mean, personally, I think we're trying to foster entrepreneurship inside of downtown Belmont, and a lot of these folks, you know, aren't coming in capital-rich, and I can remember driving through town when every store was empty. And I think investing in downtown was a smart thing. A big decision was made many years ago to, to do some work downtown, and thank God somebody had the guts to do it. So, I, what little money that we put to this thing in the whole scheme of things, in my opinion, they're dropping the bucket for what return an investment can get on it.
Well, you know, I've been on that floor since 2013 when it was formed, and one of the largest budget items on it this year is the Friday Night Live series, which I don't think benefits the salons and all that stuff, it benefits everybody in town who, who goes to the Friday Night Live. It's been vetted, you know, I haven't been real receptive of it, you know, the downtown Belmont area is our single-largest economic driver for the whole city of Belmont. And I think if, if everybody could just think of the largest company they had and decided you're going to raise taxes on that, it might be not the best economical way to move forward, although we can, we can talk about and see how it is. But it's not a tax on the business owners, it's a tax on the building owners, the, the actual people who own the buildings. And so, that's a different task than going down the street, asking somebody who's working at the coffee shop if they would support a tax increase to why did the sidewalks have put flat hard beds in, because they don't own the buildings. And that's different, and, you know, there's some other effects to it. I mean, if property taxes go up, so does the rental rates and all that, and what kind of side effects that is. And that's all elasticity, that's all we're looking at. When you raise water rates, when you raise rental rates, it's just elasticity and stuff. I think the Main Street Board's way more robust than, than just what, what you've been focused on, and so I think I'd be supportive of just keeping it where it's at. And really, I think we should be continuing to shift money there, because that's winning, that's generating revenue for the town that we're then using in other areas, as opposed to, I mean, we can't generate enough money in soccer subscription fees to build other things, but we can with economic developments, it's just one side of the table. The other comment I was going to make outside of that is I think you did a great job presenting this, and it was, it was good to hear you do it. With the $2 up and the $2 down, I think you kind of just went over that easy. It's not a sleight of hand. There's legislative reasons, so you can't mix the funds, you can't co-mingle them. So, that's why we're doing it, so we can reduce the expense over here, we're going to increase it over here, so we can do different projects. And it's really just for your protection, so that we're not like taking money from your water rates and building a skateboard park with it. It's that, that money is set aside for this people to raise. I'm sorry, I'm a bad example. But you know what I mean, so I just wanted to kind of, because I'm sure we'll hear about that, like, it doesn't make any sense, but it makes all the sense in the world if you understand that the budgets have to be held separate per state legislature.
So, when you, when you pay your water and sewer bill, you're really focused on the bottom line, you're paying $50 or $100, depending on how much water you use. But that actually goes into three of the different funds that I talked about. The majority of it goes into the water and sewer fund. The, what was the $3, or what is the $3 stormwater fund goes to our stormwater utility fund, and then, what is the $9 solid waste fee goes into the general fund, that's also the cost of the general fund. So, you only see the one, you only make one payment, but it goes into three different accounting funds, which we don't co-mingle. So, given the increase in property values, we didn't want to also increase our fees that everybody pays. So, we needed to increase funding for the stormwater, because we've got, we're way behind on that. And so, we didn't think it would be fair to increase the fees on stormwater and also have a higher tax bill for people. So, we were able to offset, have the, the higher tax valuations, we're able to afford to reduce the solid waste fee. So, thank you for coming, that clarification.
Well, just to clarify, I mean, I do support the Main Street Program, I support your work, I don't support necessarily the funding. You know, to Ron's point, we want to be cutting your budget if you don't like it, so to clarify that point. And again, not to belabor it, but it is just, you know, I struggle with it because we are taking tax dollars from the city, and we're funneling them into a specific area to the exclusion of all the other areas which also fund through their tax dollars improvements in one area. And if I were in these outside areas, I would struggle with that, and say, look, I'm on the other side of this line, and I can't leverage this money, which essentially my tax dollars, to improve my business. So, I think we talked also about expanding that zone for the incorporated players. So, I mean, I'm not going to hold up the budget based on that, but I do think that this is something operationally that we need to look at, and I hope that they do address that.
Do I hear a?
I'll make a motion, we come out and vote here.
I'll say it.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here's your thoughts on the next item on the House.
This is off the next item on the agenda. Consider the approval of the city budget for 2018.
I'll say it.
Got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work, Michelle, Adrian, and everybody that was involved with the department head. You did a great job on that, a lot of work that happened, went into that, thank you very much. All right, item number six. Just bump a page here. Consider traffic calming devices for Julia Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that has, it's been a longstanding issue that has come, some more attention recently with some recent events on Julia Avenue. The police chief was working on some speed issues. I'll let him explain what they've been doing for the police departments. But the police chief has been working with the fire chief, the public works director and staff on some possible solutions, or at least things to help mitigate some of the speeding concerns and safety concerns that we have on Julia Avenue. So turn it over to Chief Hawkins.
Mayor, council, Mr. Manager, citizens, I get the fun task of talking about speeding. I know this is, our largest help of saying, I know this is a issue all around the city, and it's, it's brought to our attention all the time. Some of it is perception, and some of it is real. I can tell you from when I was in, the time when I was in school, Julia Avenue has been an issue, but it's been an issue with speeding. And so we did not just start the studies on Julia Avenue recently, we started these as I will get into the presentation here. So our first one was in June of 2018, and we ran that for five days, I'm kidding, for five days there. And a total during that time was eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine vehicles. I'm not going to, I'm not going to try to bore you with all the numbers, but I think some of these are significant just to see what we did. So the number of vehicles traveling faster than thirty-five miles per hour was nine hundred and thirty-nine vehicles, ten point six percent of the vehicles. The highest speed was sixty-seven miles per hour. Keep in mind, that was probably a motorcycle or something like that. Most cars could not cover that area at sixty-seven miles per hour safely, or even keep it on the road. That's something, I'm not saying that cars can't do it, but that is not a common occurrence on that road. And that was, those, those speeds, most of the speed issues are not that high. And I have a whole packet of things that we can go through, there's definitely speeding. Peak times in terms of volume and speed was seven AM to nine AM, five PM to seven. You know, what's significant about this is, school's not in session. So keep this in mind, it's, our study's very specific, so our times. The traffic study, so we also did one October of 2018 through November the fifth, a thirteen-day study, and there was a total of sixteen thousand four hundred and eighty-seven vehicles. And of those faster than thirty-five was two thousand nine hundred and seventy, so eighteen percent, and the highest speed being fifty-eight miles per hour. And that was a peak time from seven AM to eight AM and two-thirty to four. This, and these, these speed studies is not an officer sitting out there, we actually have a speed study instrument that gives us the real data, real time, and we utilize this because it tells us when we need to place officers there, when we need to be focused on it, or if there's something different that we can do. So the last traffic study that we conducted was April eighth through April the fourteenth, a seventeen-day study, which served, this one, school was in, in session. A total of traveling faster than thirty-five miles per hour was two thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine out of the seventeen thousand four hundred and forty-five, highest speed being fifty-four miles per hour during this study. And the peak times in terms of volume and speed, seven AM to eight AM, two-thirty to four, five to seven, basic for school times and business times. That wasn't surprising to us, that's actually what, what we expected, because Julia is a heavily traveled road, but the, the issue is, it's, it's a cut-through, and that's the biggest issue with Julia Avenue, and has been for some time. So enforcement efforts. In 2018, we sighted thirty-nine vehicles for going fifteen miles per hour over speed, which wouldn't see the forty miles per hour because it's a twenty-five mile per hour zone. And in 2018, below fifteen over was thirty-one vehicles that were sighted. And in 2019, seventeen were sighted for going over fifteen, and twelve for under. You can see we had the radar trail today, it's just sometimes we had the radar trail. I'm not sure if they picked it up yet when I did this.
It's still there.
Okay, it was, it was present, so we're.
But the battery's out of it, it ain't working.
Yes, it will, it will run down, so, and they have to pick it up. So I also wanted to look at not just a speeding issue, I wanted to look at some collision data. So from January the first, two thousand nine to present, there was a total of one hundred and six collisions, twenty-three of those, personal injury, that could be anything from a hurt finger to a serious injury. Property damage, there was twenty-three of those, and there were eighty-three total property damage collisions during that time. Now, what this data does not show us, as you well know, on streets such as Julia, it's a very narrow street, has a lot of curves, and has a lot of areas to run off the road. And people run off the road, they do not report it, they leave, they damage people's property, and I think you will hear that from some of the residents, that's, that's some of the issues that we deal with. That is data that we are unable to collect because either one is not reported or not there, we can see where cars run off, got in a ditch, got out before the police got there, we never even knew about it. So those, you know, we can't.
We looked at different statistics with that for other people.
Yes, well, this.
How many of those, that would be, was that?
Yes, ma'am. So in 2018, we issued thirty-nine for going above fifteen mile per hour speed, and so they would have exceeded forty miles per hour, and thirty-one below that.
But the thirty-five hundred was that two thousand nineteen or two thousand eighteen we hear?
Eighteen, no, from May to date, from May twenty eighteen. And keep in mind, that's a, here's another issue that we face there, we have to weigh public safety against the violations. That is a very dangerous road for our officers to conduct traffic enforcement on. Sometimes you may say, well, why did that officer not go after that car? Well, if we're going to put someone's life in danger, that causes more danger than the violated vehicle, then we're not going to go after that car. And people don't understand that sometimes. But that is a very difficult area for us to maneuver our vehicles around, to get turned around, because we're not just focused on the violated vehicle, we have to focus on children, as you talked about, we have to focus on property, and are we going to get our car off in a ditch trying to get, are we going to get T-boned by another car when we're trying to pull out into that traffic? So it's a very dangerous situation. So there's a lot of factors that we have to take into consideration, and I know sometimes to the general public, it just appears that, you know, they should just go out here and go get everybody. But, you know, we have to weigh a lot of, a lot of things into that, and I will ask David to just talk about the engineering, the recommendations for the locations of it.
Thank you, Chief. Just so council will know, after we talked to Chief, Adrian and I, and the chief got together, if this speed humps, if there's a difference between speed bumps and speed humps, and we're talking, speed bumps are what you see in parking lots where they're doing that. But there, it has to be a certain criteria. And so Adrian asked that we get up with LaBella. LaBella is our engineering firm out of Charlotte, we've been using LaBella many years, even when they were USI. They specialize in traffic studies, they also, they're the company that does our street survey and rating condition, so they're very certified engineers. So Adrian asked that I get up with LaBella, I did that. The engineer that had been working with me for probably over a week now, it's a young lady by the name of Sandy Hayes, so she's the design engineer. Without going into great detail, Adrian and I just got this four-page report this afternoon around five o'clock, that's when it finally came in. So I don't believe they had conference yet, is that correct? But we'll get you a copy of the engineering design report. So they are the specialists that signed off on it. But basically, a quick story, they are recommending what they call the transitional speed humps. This is where it transitions, it goes, it's twenty-two feet long, the width of the road. It transitions at sixty, goes out ten, transitions back down to sixty. Julia Avenue is over three-quarters of a mile long, so it's a long street, it's a hilly street, like the chief said, a lot of blind curves, a lot of blind hills. So the engineers say to do speed humps, we've got to have them within over eight hundred feet. This keeps them from going down to a speed hump, if we have them further out than that, the speed builds up, and we don't want the vehicles flying off the speed hump. And as he said earlier, we do not have curb and gutter. And in all honesty, Julia Avenue, very, very even hardly has any shoulders, I mean, they're very, extremely narrow. I knew personally, because we were hit on Julia Avenue, my family and I, so we had no way to go for a roll over. So anyway, so the engineering company is saying that Julia Avenue would need at least five of these humps. They estimated it at four thousand dollars each on their report. Our paving company, which is custom paving, Gary talked about earlier, I met with them, they estimated it at forty-five hundred each, so they were, they were pretty much on target. So you're looking at that, if you're looking at cost of thermoplastic painting, when you do the triangles, so you can sit in line, and then some signage, there was talk of doing some four-way stop signs there at Willerane, Greenwood, and Julia. They even show a design of doing a four-way, a three-way stop sign at the bottom of the hill on Julia, but in their letter it states that, like the chief said, they are not in favor of speed, of stop signs being a common device. They, they don't like it. The humps will work. So altogether, we can do this based on their design, it keeps us out of it, they'll, they'll tell us where, they've already told us in the report where they need to go. And then after, if it's approved, they recommend that you meet with the neighbors, you do a kind of community outreach with the schools, with the neighborhood, with the businesses where these, so we don't fly inside anymore. Because once they go in, like the chief said earlier, once they go in, they go in. And so that's what we're looking, so overall, if we did that for Julia Avenue based on their design, we're looking at roughly thirty thousand dollars for signage and paving and speed humps.
Would I be, I have a place to ask some of the residents that live on Julia Avenue, how do they feel about visitors that are here?
You've heard, heard public comment on that?
Nobody, nobody signed it.
Adrian, do you think moving forward, we need to have these people come and speak to council, and the theory behind it, and also invite the public into that meeting at that time to get conceptual part of this? Because I'm not a traffic engineer, and I don't know, but I really would like to hear their rationale for going certain things. And then notify the people on that street that there's going to be a council to discuss that, have like a little public session with them. I think, I think this is an important issue, but I think that we need to have all the facts about it, everyone needs to be involved in it.
I agree to some extent, Belmont can do, because I traveled that since the first of January, I'm a woman, but look at Doc, we're going to be really, we're going to guess our policy in a number of different situations, and we're also going to be adding account of at least seven other areas that are going to qualify, or think they qualify to be used in the criteria we're looking at now. So I want, I want to make sure we study this before we say yes for going ahead with that, because I have a number of major concerns about it.
That's why I think it's important to have them come and talk to us.
Well, I mean, you know, I would, I would add that I think any delays is, I think we're going to ride to the same conclusion. I mean, I've been in Belmont close to thirty years, and that road has always been a problem. I've been to Mr. Beck's property over that time, particularly while I'm on council, there were cars that gone through the yard and left pieces of that car behind. One time, there was a Jeep almost vertical, I think, by telephone pole.
At the, at the corner of Lakeview, and yeah, it was laying on its side.
And you know, when I went up there this last time, there's two small children, the lady, I think, is a vice principal at Gaston, and they play in the front yard. And you know, I mean, I felt at that point that I'm aware of this now, and we need to address it because if something were to happen to a small child, I mean, I would have guilt issues over that. I think, I mean, you can, you can study something all you want to, I think that data is there to speed humps. But I would add, preface that, but you know, on the MPO, we are a data-driven organization, a metropolitan planning organization, but we are allowed to assign local input points, which are not related to data, because the MPO people recognize that sometimes what may look good and is data-driven, that we, I won't say know the truth, but we have a different perspective because we use it. So we're allowed latitude in what we do. So they recognize that a purely data-driven system may not be optimal because it doesn't take into account personal experience or what can be knowledge of the area of the road. I understand what Martha and Ron are saying.
Well, see, and I agree with Mr. Beck though, because he talked about signage, the kids that play and stuff, a number of the areas where I've seen they do that, people do pay attention, I don't know whether all of the people do. So I think we still have to go back. Enforcement is your biggest ticket, he's like, and certainly on Cedar Boulevard, you guys have done a great job of decreasing it, and we're looking at less than three percent of tickets. I still think if we got to, and I hate to take your manpower away, but I would much prefer us stay with that and continue to hit it, because I don't think, if you're looking at five speed tables, that's going to, I mean, I can, that and traveling, that, which is like the basic, I consider a collector road, and doing that, because you're going to cut my speed, I don't stay there, because I know that y'all are going to watch me, and I, but at the same time, you're going to look at, I'm thinking, what, you're going to cut me down to ten miles an hour going down there, it's hard to keep from going more than twenty-five down the hill as it is now, so I just don't see the realistic piece of this from the engineering part. So I want somebody to explain that part for me as well.
Was what you read, the engineer's opinion?
Yes, yes, sir, I have.
I guess, I'm, like, we have a professional opinion in writing, and we got our public works director and our police chief making this recommendation to us, we know what it's going to cost, why don't we just do it? And then we can send a letter to all the neighbors, just like we do for rezoning, and let them know what's going on. I mean, it'd be great to have more public feedback, but this is the kind of information we need to make decisions, expert opinion.
I'd like to offer a motion that we go ahead and accept this and move forward with this.
The only problem I have is you're asking me to make a decision on some data that I haven't even seen. Well, I agree that you have those papers in front of you, but I think in order for me to make a decision on how to vote.
... space for the year, and ask for some funding, because we could use the funding upfront now, basically, you know, it'd be great operational funding for us, that way I'm not sending you a bazillion invoices all year long, and it gives you liberty to kind of use it as much as you want, and the employees can use it at a fifty percent discount. And I already have a few events lined up with the employees for the summer, like the graduation event is eve, Friday, actually, so.
How much are you charging for the event?
You know, it depends, but I can tell you right now, based on what I've learned, I've been way under market, when I've learned the market, I say a thousand dollars in the downstairs event spaces, what the market is demanding, I haven't been charging that right now. But I would say seven fifty for a day now, now that I've learned.
Is that what you've been paying, has that been paying so far then, or what?
No, I, I've let the city use it for free until now, you guys, because you've been so generous, I mean, oh my gosh. So I've been giving it to them to use for now. And so when July one kicks in, I thought, you know, I really need to start charging for the space, right, so.
Let me answer your question coming following, because I see here, and I guess what we're doing is some sort of trade, because that's, assuming I'm reading this correctly, is you're figuring just one office space for employees and visitors to use for a year?
Uh huh.
Okay, so that's what we're getting. We're getting one event per month in a large space rental, which is a total value of seven two hundred dollars, and it goes on and on down here to Christmas parties.
And I got that idea from the employees here, also.
Several city departments using space six times, that's, you know, six thousand dollars. Let me ask you this, this is a lot of usage that the city has, that we may not be able to use.
Right.
We may have more usage than we can fill a room.
Right.
If that were the case, if you were able to sell the space, essentially, if you, if we could not use it, and you can sell it to someone.
I certainly am not against anything that's going to increase safety, but I still would like to read the, the information.
Well, you know, as I say, we have the engineer's report. Well, you know, I would say we have the engineer's report, which I would qualify as an expert, you know.
Chief.
But we've not seen it, Richard.
Have you read it, Richard? Well, let me, Ron, let me also say that you guys just approved a resolution on a House bill, it's not out of committee, and you went ahead and had a resolution to support that. And I voted against it because I said, yeah, I haven't read that. So I mean, the situation has just reversed itself. We have the information. I mean, I take your word that you read the report, that you endorse it, and that you, the chief feels like, you know, he says he's never endorsed this, but in this instance he is. I know David Eisenhower avoided a head-on collision there and had to roll over into a ditch.
In my yard.
In his yard. I mean, I think there's enough evidence there, and I think the delay, I mean, we're delaying for delaying purposes, we are going to come right back around to where we are right now.
I think we're out of discussion, the vote's already had. I think everybody up here means well, just has different perspectives on the situation. So I wish to just move on.
It's a matter of perspective, each guy has an opinion, I have an opinion, I respect his and each respect ours, let's move on.
So I'm, during the manager's report, I'm going to ask you to schedule a special meeting on Monday, June the twenty-fourth, which is three weeks from tonight, to do final budget amendments and wrap up the current budget year. So that is typically a short meeting, that's Julie, ten or fifteen minutes. That will be Monday, the twenty-fourth. So that would be a good opportunity to bring in.
Sandy Hayes.
Sandy, and certainly notify the neighbors, and.
I don't know her schedule, Adrian, I have to call her tomorrow. I told her to call her back tomorrow when we need you up.
And that would be one of the four, four-thirty, five o'clock meeting, depending on your availability. And we'll certainly let everybody know on that. The other option would be to defer it to the July first regular meeting. But this may, this may be better at a special meeting. Make that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, Mayor, members of council, Mark Pranger with the Greater Gaston Development Corporation. We manage the Gaston Outside Campaign for a steering committee, in which you're a member and Brian serves on that committee. Real pleasure to be here with you again tonight. We've had a number of presentations to you over the years in the Go campaign. This is, we're five months into the fourth year of the campaign. And as Adrian mentioned, Vincent Ginsky from my office was there a month ago, you know, gave you kind of an update on where we are. I wanted to give you a little more background on just a funding request and sort of the year three, year four question as to whether it was a three-year campaign or four-year campaign, or how, what's the fourth year of it about. And Vincent shared a lot that with you, but let me give you a little background as to how we got from year three to year four, if I could, to clarify the request. As you know, the Gaston Outside Campaign is a public-private project funded by the private sector, GUDC members, or the private funders of it. About two-thirds of our members put money in the bucket for the campaign, and then publicly funded by the county and then eight of our municipalities. Originally scoped it as a three-year project, it was a recommendation of the Alliance for Growth Plan developed in 2014 by a group of one hundred and ten, one hundred and fifteen community leaders across Gaston County. One of the areas they focused on was the image and marketing of the county. And one key part, when they said in 2014 that we should do a campaign like this, was that we need to measure the effect and miss of the campaign after the original three-year period to see how well we were doing, were we moving the needle in terms of perception of Gaston County? And so we did that, and I'll tell you a little bit about that process. In 2014, there was a survey conducted of opinion leaders in Mecklenburg County, developers, opinion leaders and citizens in Gaston County. And the results weren't what we would like. They came back predominantly either neutral, and a lot of those were Gaston or Mecklenburg County and the developing community, just weren't really thinking about doing things in Gaston County, or negative. And our local perceptions weren't what we would like to receive from our own citizens. So that generated the interest in doing the campaign, generated the funding for the campaign and the development of it. Ran it for, started in 2016, so it was 2016, 2017, 2018, started in, ruled it out in June of 2016, did development for the first six months of the campaign. And then last summer, we did a new study by the same firm that had done the study in 2014. Basically the same groups, some targeted opinion leaders on both sides of the river, what were you seeing in Gaston County, what kind of progress was being made. And I think Vincent Ginsky shared with you a synopsis of that study at your last meeting. And the results came back fairly very encouraging, that the, sort of the bulk of the opinions, both inside the county and outside the county, had moved to neutral to positive, with a significant number very positive. I mean, it was, and there were really two aspects to the survey. One was, give us your generalized opinion and perception of Gaston County, based on everything you're seeing and reading and hearing, and just, and then give us some specific information on the Go campaign itself. What are you seeing, what do you like, what should we be doing? And both of those came back positive.
We gave, three years ago, fifty thousand dollars to help fund this campaign. There was reticence on council to fund the full fifty thousand dollars. So I went to Travel and Tourism, I was a member of that board, and was able, literally to wrangle twenty-five thousand dollars away from them, to split the cost. And, you know, there were, there were some reticence on the board through the way with billboard and some other things, but it did make sense that this contribution was going to get us a million dollars worth of advertising. Okay, so at the end of the day, we split the cost with the tourism board. And what I'd like to ask council to consider is that if he is not in a rush for this, that we do the same thing, we go back to the Travel and Tourism Board, and this is right up their alley, and we split the cost with them, which I think is reasonable, because that's what those dollars are intended for.
I agree with you.
So, I mean, I would support it, but I wouldn't like to see this. I mean, I would like to save the tax dollars here, because I think there's an option, a revenue stream that's earmarked for this specific type of campaign.
Hey, Richard, I don't know, but what, that money should totally come out of Travel and Tourism, because this is, it depends on the debt, in the debt, because people come in to see, you know, us and go to all the different places, you know, whether it's the Garden or Blackwater, that kind of thing, so.
Well, that's true, this is, this is not a great deal of money, I mean, maybe, it might not be about your petitioning for a full amount. I mean, in full disclosure to everyone here, I sit on that committee, Councilman Schreiber sits on it also. So, you know, I know we depend on the reception by the other board members, I know they've got some other things in the works, but as you saw on the budget, I do know we're having a banner here for, before that end, and we're getting more money than we ever had.
So is travel and tourism specifically for Belmont or for Gaston County?
Belmont.
We know our own.
Yeah, so that makes sense.
I don't think Mark cares where the money comes from.
I would agree with Councilman Schreiber, he's doing a lot of that. And he's got a year under his belt working with a PR firm, and we've built up a lot of media stock that we can reuse, we don't have to redo with the PR firm. We got ordered a lot of material last year and the last year, the fully funded program. So we're thinking ahead, trying to, trying to get prepared for this year, where we knew the funding would be a little bit lower. So we're doing more in-house, and actually, we're getting some, we're getting better numbers than we did the last couple of years from the PR firm. And that's some of it from us doing it, Vincent doing it, and then we hired two local writers who have provided content, which has been a very important thing, very targeted, very specific content, that's been, been very well received. And it's easier for, much easier for us to manage it than it was with the PR firm. They did a great job in what they did, they're based in Greenville, and we've got people right here we can meet with frequently and get a more targeted response. So had a great meeting with executive, with the steering committee last week, brought them up to speed with where we were on year four of the campaign. And we've got a funding request of fifteen thousand, six twenty-five to Belmont, this pay, in year four of the campaign. There's, just, Vincent shared these with you, it's a very robust campaign, we've got three major new elements of it, newsletter that's going out, y'all should be receiving, if you're not, make sure you're on the list to get it. Blog content, which is very frequent, that these writers are turning out, actually two things apiece each week. You can see we've got a blog on Tech Works, blog on Light Rail, newsletter is the right-hand, it's on the right hand there. Resigned the website completely, made it more user-friendly, made it more appealing, and people will go back to it for posting blog content on it with frequency, so get a lot more hits on that, so we're happy about that. Charlotte Business Journal will be advertising again, starting at the end of next month. And this was an interesting deal here, because we're contracting with them directly for it, we get a nonprofit rate. But in the years past, when the PR firm was contracting for us, with them, they didn't get the nonprofit rate. So we're actually getting about a third more advertising in the business journal than we got the last couple of years. So that was a propitious result of us doing it directly. And putting out a number more press releases, essentially free stories from the Gazette, et cetera, and we'll be doing billboards, which you'll see, starting next month. So that's just a snapshot of, you saw some of that from Vincent, but we're, we're very pleased with the results. The steering committee is pleased with the results of the campaign so far, and look forward to continuing on. And as with anything, as you get four, five, six years into something like this, you need to reexamine it, and you say, okay, how's it working, should we readjust it, should we refocus it some? And I think, and I don't have empirical evidence on this, I've got a lot of anecdotal evidence, but I think this campaign has caused a lot of other organizations and a lot of our cities and towns and the county to up their game in the PR arena, just anecdotally, looking at what they're doing and how they're doing it. And we meet with PR and public affairs folks from across the county and all the municipalities periodically, talk about the campaign and what you're doing, how we're doing it, and I think we're seeing a significant improvement in that. And I think that's great. I mean, what you want to do is, is utilize this to increase the capacity of all the organizations across the county to do a better job of selling what's great about Gaston County, and whether, and what it is, it's a great place to live and work and play and raise your kids and educate your children. So I think we're making progress and would hope it will approve the funding request for this year.
Mark, how soon do you need this money, if it were approved?
We can, after, basically your rolls is fine.
Okay, the reason, the reason I ask is historical reference, I guess, for the audience, is we gave, three years ago, fifty thousand dollars to help fund this campaign. There was reticence on council to fund the full fifty thousand dollars. So I went to Travel and Tourism, I was a member of that board, and was able, literally to wrangle twenty-five thousand dollars away from them, to split the cost. And, you know, there were, there was some reticence on the board through the way with billboard and some other things, but it did make sense that this contribution was going to get us a million dollars worth of advertising. Okay, so at the end of the day, we split the cost with the tourism board. And what I'd like to ask council to consider is that if he is not in a rush for this, that we do the same thing, we go back to the Travel and Tourism Board, and this is right up their alley, and we split the cost with them, which I think is reasonable, because that's what those dollars are intended for.
I agree with you.
So, I mean, I would support it, but I wouldn't like to see this. I mean, I would like to save the tax dollars here, because I think there's an option, a revenue stream that's earmarked for this specific type of campaign.
Hey, Richard, I don't know, but what, that money should totally come out of Travel and Tourism, because this is, it depends on the debt, in the debt, because people come in to see, you know, us and go to all the different places, you know, whether it's the Garden or Blackwater, that kind of thing, so.
Well, that's true, this is, this is not a great deal of money, I mean, maybe, it might not be about your petitioning for a full amount. I mean, in full disclosure to everyone here, I sit on that committee, Councilman Schreiber sits on it also. So, you know, I know we depend on the reception by the other board members, I know they've got some other things in the works, but as you saw on the budget, I do know we're having a banner here for, for that end, and we're getting more money than we ever had.
So is travel and tourism specifically for Belmont or for Gaston County?
Belmont.
We know our own.
Yeah, so that makes sense.
I don't think Mark cares where the money comes from.
I would agree with Councilman Schreiber. And in fact, Mount Holly, for instance, we got a check from them the other day, they split it between their general fund and their travel tourism. I think maybe even split, I'm not sure.
I mean, we've, I think splitting is fair, well, I do understand, the travel and tourism makes sense, but so, I mean, there's an economic development campaign too, it's separate. But it, I mean, it doesn't matter, I mean, it's, but I would, I would like to give them our confidence that we're going to do it. And if Richard and I can't get Travel and Tourism Board on board, I'd be surprised, but if that's the case, it's more important to the city of Belmont that this continues and happens, and that the city of Belmont has a seat on that steering committee as well.
Can we, could we send a motion, make me that we, we won't agree to do this, but have all that in the motion or not, so that, or we'll cover the cost if travel and tourism does it, does not, as opposed to holding the process up?
And I believe that's, that's sort of the process you used when you were considering funding for the River District logo and the water tower on the antique mall. You would pay for all, but you really were hoping the Tourism Authority would pay for half, which they ended up doing. So, so yes, so the full funding is included in the budget for next year, but certainly I would prefer that half of that come from the Tourism Authority. I don't know when their next meeting is.
It's Wednesday, Wednesday. I mean, we can, we can motion to amend the agenda.
And we make a motion to approve the money and request a grant from Travel and Tourism?
Yes, sir.
Fifty percent of it, say what y'all were saying?
I don't think, I wish that was.
Request a grant from Travel and Tourism.
I agree with Mark, I mean, I think this is really what they are intended to do. I mean, I would prefer that they ask us for the full amount, you know, if they're full amount, then we subsidize.
That'd be great.
So we make a motion that we support the request for the fifteen thousand, this Travel and Tourism grant for the full amount. Is that what you were talking about?
That's a motion, I'll second it.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. I didn't know you were doing the water tower, we got a really big Go logo on it. Don't you worry about it, sorry. On a personal note, many, some of you know, I'm retired from the GUDC at the end of this month. And I wanted to let you all know that it's been a privilege and honor to work with you, it's been a great pleasure, to get to know you and to work with you. And Belmont has all of Gaston County, but Belmont in particular, and has an extremely bright future. It's a, it's a really, really neat place with a lot of great people that makes it that, makes it that way. So it's been a privilege for me to work with you, and I appreciate it a great deal, and look forward to seeing y'all over time, but I want to be spending more time with grandkids at the beach and doing a few other things. Thank you so much.
Well, it's a pleasure working with you too, Mark, you're a good person to work with, understanding, I'm just glad that we got to know you.
Thank you, thank you.
Next item, next item on the agenda is consider the request for funding and use the green group for Tech Works. Mr. Terry Cox?
So thank you, Mayor, and members of city council for letting me speak with you tonight, and to provide an update on Tech Works. And I also wanted to just take the opportunity to thank Adrian Miller and his staff for just being awesome group to work with. I've been now in the area about two and a half years and just couldn't say enough great things about Belmont and the staff here, and the city, and the folks. I do owe what Mark has to say, it's been an absolute joy. And even though I don't live here, I live here in a heartbeat, so. As most of you know, we, yeah, as most of you know, we just opened up about a month and a half ago. And I feel like the last couple of times I've presented, it's been about the outfit, the building outfit. So now we're beyond that, and I'd love to just share with you what Tech Works is really all about, and what we're really trying to do. I mean, it was a several-year journey to get to the opening, but the big journey is really ahead of us. And I'm very passionate about. And I'm very passionate about having TechWorks truly be an economic driver for Belmont and the county, serving many unserved people here. And in a recent meeting that Mark Kramer was holding, I heard the statistics, the statistic that was done, I think at the end of 2018, from the Department of Human Services, when they polled all the residents, that only 35% of, 35% of the residents in this county, this is the entire county now, see economic opportunity here. Well, that's alarming to me. I'm like, my jaw drops. Now, I think the 35%, the 65% that do see it, no, is it? Did I get it wrong?
No, yeah, 65 don't, 35.
Okay. But the few that do see it, they're here, they're in Belmont and they're in Mount Holly, right? So you guys are aware it is happening. And we intentionally put TechWorks in Belmont, because I think it's the first place that will drive that activity west, right? We got a poll from Charlotte some, this is new, this is a tech hub, it's an entrepreneurial hub, it's an innovation center. So we've got a kind of poll from Charlotte and leveraged what we have here, and hopefully it will grow west, and that is truly my, my goal. So we started out, yeah, so I'll just go right into our goals. These are the recent goals we came up with for TechWorks, and it was to create an innovative tech hub for job creation, wealth creation, and economic growth for the entire county. Become a leader in the region for tech talent development. As you guys all know, all the jobs are tech jobs now, I mean, they really are. I call them the new collar tech jobs. We've been partnering with Open Broadband, I think y'all are familiar with, to advocate for high-speed internet. So we've got it here in Belmont, we'd like to take it across the county, we're hoping to expand it through the public library system, that's our current approach, that's not a done deal. Assist a lot of the existing businesses with the whole digital workforce transformation. So again, many companies are still very traditional in how they're structured, this is operationally and everything, not just digital marketing, and they really need to digitize to really sustain. They could have a good market right now, but they may lose that market and get disrupted overnight if they don't start to get on that digital curve. And then, you know, I tease, this is an audacious goal, but I would like to have a unicorn company come out of this area, come out of TechWorks, I mean, that's a billion-dollar company, and why can't the Abbott Exchange be here? I think it can. So that's a big goal of mine, to have a unicorn company. And then, we're very intentional in the culture we're creating at TechWorks, to be a community that truly gives back, that mentors and has a peer-to-peer exchange and thought leadership. So, you know, I'm kind of being picky who goes in the space, who takes the offices in the space, who, you know, is in the space, because we want that kind of almost role model to really do the work we're doing. So so far, we've been pretty lucky to have, you know, techie companies in there and held quite a few events. I'll tell you, the event space is, is our revenue generator, right? So we've got this great mission of doing a whole lot of good work, and how we'll sustain is running that space, and it's in high demand. I think y'all, I won't go through our board of directors, I think y'all know who the board is, it's been the same board. I am bringing on a new board member in July, Greg Lovett. He runs Radius, they have Radixx Bay, he has an IT consulting firm in Valentine, he sold a consulting firm a while back, and with those proceeds, he built kind of like a TechWorks, a developer shop in Tabor City at the beach, because he sees all these people, quote-unquote, making minimum wage at McDonald's that could be coders. So his personal passion, he grew up in Tabor City, he wanted to transform Tabor City and get these guys $60,000 jobs. So he's been doing that for about three years, and he, because he's doing very similar work to what we're trying to do, I, he's going to become a member of our board and really help me with the entrepreneurial, and most importantly, the developer curriculum, the tech curriculum that we want to roll out, and I think he'll be very helpful with that. This was our grand opening, for those of you that worked there, we had a lot of politica, so to speak. And Chris Almore, who graduated from Gaston College, is, was employee number one at Abbott Exchange in Charlotte, that is now a $1.4 billion company. He called us an opportunity factory, that's what he, his tagline when he spoke that day. And I, and so we're going to run with it, because I think that's what we are, we're an opportunity factory for everyone. There, there were some of the people who spoke that day. And then, if you haven't seen the space, I just put some pictures up, please come by, because it's just right around the corner, if you haven't seen it, I'd love to give you a tour. But here are some recent photos, and top two are the reception area with the conference room, that's our downstairs event space, that's the office area and the co-working, that's our break room, kitchen area, and then another view of kind of the co-working in office. That's downstairs event space, and there's another training room. And then, this is a recent event we held in there, discussing the book Think and Grow Rich, and these are two other events. That was your Engage Belmont for Wellness event, and then this was the Central Island Council of Governments that did a full-day retreat there. That's what I'm finding, it's like every, you know, BELC came, that came there, TIA, CREF has been there, I mean, we get random people, all kinds of different events that we couldn't really leverage in our space, which is good, just pre-arranged. So this is what I want to do. I want to be intentional about launching this technology academy, and I've applied for quite a few grants, foundations to do this work, because we do not have the funding right now to do this work. And I'm very passionate about it. So I'm really passionate about making TechWorks a hub for cybersecurity for the region. Because what I have learned, and people can laugh at me because of the big space, right? But what I've learned is no one is doing it anywhere in the region. I went to a meeting last week with 35 technology organizations in the Charlotte area, no one is touching cybersecurity. And I think it's because it's so big, overwhelming, and complex, so I thought, well, why think we're going to do it? So we are meeting with Congressman in the Kendricks office next week, because there's some recent federal money that's come into cyber education and training, and just see where we can go with it. So I'm just at the very beginning stages of it, but we are meeting next week. I'm also in great discussion with Lowe's, who's rolled out this whole Gen T training program for trades. And he's also running their 2,000-person kind of new tech hub, this same guy's doing both. And he said it would be great if TechWorks could do tech and trades. It's all Internet of Things, right? So it's the blend of, it's truly IoT, train the trades and train the tech and put them together, because they don't, those are two solids and never come together on anything. He said what he's learned with Lowe's, no one knows how to build a smart home. It's a disaster how smart homes are built today, because you have all these devices, and no one in the regular construction people know how to deal with the devices and how to spec them out, design them, implement them, everything. And of course, cyber is a huge issue with all this, a huge issue, and even Lowe's isn't kind of addressing that at the moment. But we're in initial conversations, they just announced this this past month, both of these huge initiatives, and he really wants to work with TechWorks. And then, I've been saying this, but I really want to do a full-year program on data analytics that supports these initiatives, IT networking that we did last year, Python's a new kind of database language that we haven't done, and then DevOps is like the next big thing. I mean, DevOps is like a massive market, but that's a little more complex. And then, we want to do K through 12 integration, we're meeting with some rising sophomores in high school on June 24th to go over AR, VR, AI, and IoT, sorry to have all my acronyms. We're going to do a flashlight circuits program, ages nine to 13, on July 10th and August 10th. We just made a mini maker space.
Say what that is, that's really interesting.
What the? Flashlight Circuits Program. So Morgan, who's in my space, Morgan Stewart is a mechanical engineer of a sealed air, very passionate about STEM for, for kids, but for girls too, getting them interested. As a matter of fact, she literally has a maker space in her house, she just bought a house in Belmont, has a maker space in her spare bedroom. I said, Morgan, you don't need to have that in your spare bedroom. So this weekend, we took the whole maker space out of her spare bedroom and put it in one of our offices, since we're not fully rented up yet. I say, as long as that space is available, keep your maker space there, and it's adorable, I think it'll really help a lot of kids. But the flashlight circuits program helps them with solder and circuits, you basically take apart a flashlight and you build a flashlight, all in a day. And then, after that course, like that one-day thing, there's a curriculum to kind of continue on that path that MIT has created, so we're going to see what kind of interest we get from that, and we're going to go ahead and do the full curriculum if there's interest. We thought we'd play around with the one-day, but she showed me, the next one's quiz boards, I'm not sure what that is, but there's some fun things that followed, keep, and then, of course, we're going to have, as long as the office stays the way it is, we'll have space for them to play in, right? Like they can do the course and they can come back and play, because we'll have all those tools and materials in our space. So it's not like a one-and-done, which was sort of a concern to Morgan and I, that we continue the enthusiasm and learning. These are just some past courses we've done, so even though we haven't been open for two years, we've been doing quite a few coding courses. So this is just my poster child, Brian Roth. He started with a web dev course, he went to a mobile app course, and then he went into an online Lamba School coding course for a full year, and now he's a junior developer at Bank of America. And he started out in pure poverty. Wow, he started out telling me he wanted out of his life, and that's when I gave him the opportunity to go to these courses, and now. So that, I just want more Brian Rofs, right? This was our girls' coding course, we did two of those last year, and this was our most recent IT networking course, and God bless, Austin Lutz is in the middle there, he grew up in Dallas, he is an IT engineer, networking engineer with Cloverham in Charlotte, he's a passion to really bring tech to Gaston County. He did this 10, it ended up being 10 weeks, this 10-week course for free, for free, so that we could bring all the kids in for free, or the students in for free. And he's willing to do it again, he would like to be paid just a rub or something this next go-around, so I told him I would, and then he would like to do an advanced course, but quite a few of them ended up getting Cisco certified. He hired one of these, at Cloverham, actually, so, yeah, so it worked, worked pretty well. We partnered with Goodwill on that one. And then, this is our little mini maker space, that's Cody from the Highland School of Technology that's been interning with me, will intern with me this summer. These are all of our educational events that were separate from this technology academy, so to speak, they're just entrepreneurial education. So our upcoming ones, next Friday, we're discussing the book about Elon Musk, as y'all know, probably Tesla and whatnot. We're trying to get the Tesla dealership to bring in a sports car for our event. We're doing a meetup on AR, VR, augmented reality, virtual reality, we have two most recent headsets for it that we're going to demo, we're going to bring in a top guy, I hope, from Charlotte, he's interested in joining us on June 20th. And then, these are two kind of half-day educational events, actually Adrian attended our last one, basically on growing companies, and it's meant for companies that are beyond startup, I'd say, early stage to late stage, so kind of helping that group out as well, not just startups. And then, these, that was our blockchain event we held a couple of years ago, that was a gig wow event demonstrating the power of gigabit, this was our first meetup this year before we were open, and this was our very first event in the news space with Google on reach customers and drive growth, that's stemming mass out of Atlanta. And then, just sort of our partnership of the company. So I think that's about it, and I'll take any questions y'all have.
Thank you, Charlie.
Oh, thank you. This thing's in advance, I swear, I have to keep looking.
Technology.
Technology.
Do you ask us for $50,000?
Yes.
And, you know, what I would tell you, not to, what I would tell Mark, you know, he has a lot of questions, is because we're, you know, we're handing out tax dollars, so I'm worried, and we're charging the stewardship those tax dollars, so, you know, it's not personal, it's business, I feel like we're obligated, or I feel like I'm obligated to answer some questions on this. What is the $50,000 for? It's for annual costs, but what is that for?
So I positioned it, because I know y'all gave us money to get us through our outfit, and we are at the point where, you know, this whole thing took one year more than it was intended, because of state money, have to go back and rebid, and get the money, yada, yada, yada. So the operational funding we have in the county, of course, came to an act. So I took, you know, we're a startup, right? Our operational funding is low, until we get all this going, until some foundation funding, I hope, comes in this summer. So so far, we've had six events that folks from the city of Belmont have done at our space, whether it's an employee event or their department event. So I thought, wow, instead of like sending you an invoice every time you use our space, why don't I kind of quantify what you might use the space for the year, and ask for some funding, because we could use the funding upfront now, basically, you know, it'd be great operational funding for us, that way I'm not sending you a zillion invoices all year long, and it gives you liberty to kind of use it as much as you want, and the employees can use it at a 50% discount. And I already have a few events lined up with the employees for the summer, like a graduation event this eve, Friday, actually, so.
How much are you charging for the event?
You know, it depends, but I can tell you right now, based on what I've learned, I've been way under market, when I've learned the market, huh, I say $1,000 in the downstairs event spaces, but the market is demanding, I haven't been charging that right now. But I would say $750 for a day now, now that I've learned.
Is that perceived that being so far then, or what?
No, I've let the city use it for free until now, you guys, because you've been so generous, I mean, oh my gosh. So I've been giving it to them to use for now. And so when July 1 kicks in, I thought, you know, I really need to start charging for the space, right? So.
Do we ask any questions on the follow-up? Because I see here, and I guess what we're doing is some sort of a trade, because that's assuming I'm reading this correctly, is you're going to give us one office space for employees and visitors to use for a year. Yes, that's what we're getting. We're getting one event per month in large space rental, which is a total value of $1,700. And it goes on and on down here to Christmas parties.
And I got that idea from the employees here, also.
Several city departments using space six times, that's, you know, $6,000. Let me ask you this, this is a lot of usage that the city has, that we may not be able to use.
Right.
We may have more usage than we can fill rooms.
Right.
If that were the case, if you were able to sell the space, essentially, if you, if we could not use it, then you can sublease to someone who has a need. Instead, can the city be then reimbursed for that, so we can then recapture some of this cost? You sell our time to somebody else if we don't need it.
Well, what I prefer to do is extend as long as you need to use it up, you know, go out 18 months or two years, you know? That would work better for us right now, just because the operational capital at this point really helps. And it's really to deliver on truly this technology academy too. You know, we have enough, you know, the fees out of it right now sustain the building costs, it doesn't really sustain right now the staff and the teachers, instructors, you need to do these things.
I mean, I think you do good work, you know, like, you know, I was just, well, spitballing that concept, which is to try to recover some of the given tax dollars that were invested, and there is a way to recoup it, to work and use these, but I might misunderstand the cash flow.
Yes, we'll be really honest.
What's your, tell, what's your budget on it this year?
Now, I'm working on that right now, so I hate to, because we, so much has just changed in the last month in terms of opportunities, like the Lowe's thing just came up, as well as the cybersecurity thing, so I'm kind of revisiting a lot of where I was, and then bringing Greg Lovett on, I almost need his expertise to really carve out the tech academy, so to speak, because he has a much better sense, I'm sort of, you know, guessing.
I'm going to throw in, and I'll be quiet, I'll throw one more option out there, you know, if the city does not have need for what we're allotted, if we're aware, let's say, I mean, I'm trying to give something back to the community, tangible for this, if there's a nonprofit or someone who can use our time, could we, could we allocate that to the community in some way for that nonprofit or that entity to use our time?
I would love that.
That's a good idea.
I would love that. I've let several nonprofits use our space.
I'm trying to find a way to support this, and if we can do that, I mean, I feel that we're getting something back.
Yeah, I mean, I would be, well, actually, all over that.
So from my understanding, instead of saying the city would buy TechWorks $50,000 in exchange for this specific time rental, we would basically get a $50,000 prepaid credit for use of TechWorks, and we would, we would keep track of that, and you would keep track of that, and if we're not able to use that, then certainly nonprofit groups or civic groups in town that need a meeting space and don't have a meeting space would be able to protect that.
I would love that. Because I don't have any money, I've learned.
How about the issue of fiscal year?
Okay, well, thanks.
I agree. How about the issue of the fiscal year as far as allocation of money in fiscal year? Because what you're saying is, we would give that amount of money, and then we would use it up, because we. it up physically, but if we didn't use it up by the end of the year, then that, we'd get into a situation like we had with the Y if we're not careful. So can you, can you carry until it's conflicted use? If you're talking about, on this one right here, you're talking about forty sessions.
So, you know, I did include funding for this in case, in the event that council wanted to authorize it. So the funding is in the budget for next year, so I'm optimistic that this will be, you know, a one-time ask of this amount of money. If we can't use fifty thousand dollars' worth of time in TechWorks, then I would certainly hope that could roll over. You mentioned eighteen months, twenty-four months. So the funding part would be out of next year, but it may be that the usage, you know, to recap fifty thousand dollars' worth of time, would spill over into the upcoming...
And I think if you do open it up to nonprofits, it will get used, because I've already, like, I don't know, five, six, because I don't have any money, Lord, to just come in and use our space for a meeting or something, yeah.
And if that gets more people into the building, who then see it and would want to use the work for that.
So Adrian, we would have to craft an agreement to that fact, so that would be something that would have to be done and brought back for us to approve and move forward, because the basic thing right now doesn't speak to that.
Correct. So we could, if you're, if you're, good with that conceptually, then I, you know, I could work with Terry on crafting an agreement, put it on your consent agenda for July first.
Support it under those new terms.
Okay, all right.
And the GDPC is paying for use of the space, too, for that.
Yeah, they actually pay.
And we've had a couple of meetings, so help would support that.
We all gotta get creative, because it's in everybody's best interest that it's successful.
We have a motion to adjourn the next motion table.
I'll second.
You got a second on the favor, say aye. Thank you, Terry, I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, of all the great things I hope we've done as the GDPC, bringing Terry in to run TechWorks is one of the best.
Oh, yes, yes, you could. All right, next item on the agenda, item number nine, consider the approval of an infrastructure reimbursement agreement with North Main Street State.
Thank you, Mayor. We talked about this briefly at the CIP workshop. I know it's getting late, so I'll go to this, we can certainly ask some questions. As you know, Steve Paton, who owns the old train depot building, runs South Main Cycles and the station, and is now running space for mug shots, has been approved to build a new commercial building behind the depot building. And as part of his requirement, he is supposed to put in, required to put in pedestrian infrastructure that we have for downtown, with white sidewalks and street trees and planted wells, and a smart retaining wall, because of the grade change from Glenway Street. If you look at the frontage of Glenway Street, about half of the frontage is on the existing building, and half of it will be on the new building. In trying to make all of this work, he has requested that the city reimburse him for the cost of infrastructure, the pedestrian infrastructure in front of the existing building, and that he will, of course, pay for the improvements or the improvements in front of this new building. He provided a cost estimate of a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars for all the pedestrian infrastructure, and asked the city to reimburse him for half of that, which would be the cost of making those improvements on Glenway frontage, ramping from Main Street in front of the existing depot building. So that would be approximately ninety thousand five hundred dollars. So funding for this is included in the budget for next year. And in your packet, you see the reimbursement agreement, but also the building elevation and the site plan showing the existing building and the new building.
Adrian.
Yes, sir.
I get concerned with timing. Is this something we're gonna do, that we're gonna sit on for three years until he builds the building, or can we somehow tie it to a construction timeline?
You can certainly tie it to a construction timeline. I talked to Steve about this a couple of weeks ago, and he is, it was an issue with the downtown fire district, and it was gonna make him put in steel framing, which blew his budget. So he was able to work through that with our fire department, Gaston County Building Inspections, State Fire Marshal's Office, to allow wood framing, which brought his project back into the boat, and so it's now, it's a realistic project that can work. I'm not exactly sure where he is with plan review, but I know he's been working submitted plans and should be...
Conditionally approved.
Conditionally approved. So if, if we can agree to help to reimburse him for making these pedestrian improvements along the existing frontage with the existing building, then he plans to get started no later than August of this year, with about a one-year construction time. So if you want to hold him to that, you can certainly conclude that in the agreement.
Is this a one-off, or is this like, is this usual and customary, or I can imagine it is for us to do this, to split the required improvements?
It is, I don't know that we've done it before. Certainly, we're not, we're not, we're reimbursing him for the portion on that's on existing, which he technically wouldn't have to do, because it's not new construction, he's doing. Planet Rector is a good negotiator with this, and got him to make improvements along the existing frontage as well as the new frontage.
So it's not a required?
Well, it's in the conditional district. So the issue is, building the kind of building that he's wanting to build is really expensive. And when he got his numbers back, picked on all the infrastructure calls, the pedestrian improvements, the steel framing, it made the, it just, it made it not easy. So then, you know, he came back to us and said, well, what can we do to reduce the cost without reducing the exterior quality of the building, so that we, the city gets the kind of building that we anticipate that's in here, and that he builds the kind of building that he wants to build? We were able to work through those regulatory issues with the fire district, and that reduced the cost down. We were, if we pay for this portion, it makes it a viable project, and he can go. If we don't do it, he may not get this project.
So we negotiate with him to add something in that's not required, and then agree to pay half the cost?
I personally think in the Henshaw downtown, because it brings business, brings more people into the downtown area, it's been, what's the value of the future building?
What'd it say, a little over a million dollar construction cost? I don't know, it's a six thousand square foot commercial building downtown Belmont. So, you know, the question, yes, I mean, I don't, this is not something you'd wanna do ideally. The question is, is it worth investing to get this, to get this pedestrian infrastructure to have nice pedestrian connectivity on the, kind of the inner ring from Main Street down to Glenway to the backside of Glenway? Or is it, or we just say we don't wanna set a precedent and do this, and then we end up with, with nothing at all, except that grass and the docking ring?
Present question, I mean, it's a good question, because if you go ahead and do this, are you in a position to deny other people?
It's certainly be case by case, yeah. And once you do it for one, it's easier to do it for somebody else.
So Adrian, what you're talking about is we can improve the existing part, and he'll go fifty percent with improving that, and he'll fund the new part completely?
Yes.
So in some ways, it depends how you, how you sit on each side of the table. Are you, are you wanting to improve the old part and have somebody pay half of it? Or you sit on the other side of the table, and then you're like, well, you know, we shouldn't do anything, and if he were to build, then the new part would be the only part that'd be required, right?
Right, and we would be reimbursing him for doing, so there's no risk to the city.
So it'll be done.
So it will be done, and then he'll have to provide invoices, and we would then check in and pay for it. And so it's not like we're giving money upfront for this project, it may never happen. We only pay when it, when it happens. And it's in his best interest to keep this cost down, because we'd be matching fifty, fifty.
And we've received the invoices for the old part, which is, which is, we keep track of, we only pay for that, and we're not paying anything on the new part. So in some ways, you could see it positive, that we're gonna improve that old part, that adds to cost.
Yes.
I think it's a hard decision, but I think that's what we're here to do. And that building, the schematics, the design, the architecture, I think it's unbelievable what I think they can do, as you cover the development, so if this is the way to get to that means, I think that we should go ahead and move forward.
If you put the trolley bar down, you're gonna have to have connected.
It's gonna connect the two, and we come across the tracks, you're gonna see the whole thing come together, and your walk will be probably safer.
You know, if we look at the information they gave, it's really gonna be done very, very, very estate, very closely.
And I think my concern about coming up with the money and having it sit dead for too long was kind of addressed by saying that we're gonna get reimbursed with the project, or we will do the reimbursing when the project's complete. So, I think it's a tough decision, but it's...
The other side of the coin is, I mean, it's a private venture, it's on him to develop the property, and it's on him to make the numbers work. And if he can't do that, I'm not always in favor of subsidizing folks. I mean, because at some point, people who come to us for money or tax dollars to do improvements to their property or do things are gonna have to sink the sweat on their own merits. I'm concerned about setting precedent on this. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but...
It's not the city property.
It will be, so he will be dedicating...
It's gonna dampen that whole corn. It's not a pedestrian sidewalk here, is that our property?
Excuse me? The, the existing sidewalk on the other side of Glenway Street from his is within the north and southern right of way. It's our sidewalk and near property. So this, this would be, I mean, I know this is sort of nitpicking, but this would be public infrastructure that we're gonna, he's gonna dedicate to the city. It's on private property now, he'll dedicate the property to the city as right of way, and we will be maintaining it like we do other, it's not benefiting from private property.
You're anticipating the property at about a million dollars' value?
That's, that's what he said, his initial...
This ballpark at a million, what's the, what's the tax revenue that we'll capture yearly on something like that, a million dollar property? Is anybody able to call part?
Fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars annually. Through the, until you get paid what you want, yeah.
Okay, so in essence, we can recoup that in two years through the property tax.
I think it's a wise investment. I mean, I don't, I mean, you're gonna improve the infrastructure, you're gonna get it dedicated to you. Richard mentioned the tax revenue, in two years, you're gonna get enough to cover your investments.
The key element for me is we'll recoup it via the taxes, I think, and that, that makes it a little more sense to me, that, you know, it's not quite a gift, it's, there's...
Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Second, my dog. They will say aye.
Aye.
Motion counts. All right, next item, item D of the committee beings.
So you've got a series of committee reports and board reports from various citizen boards, as well as, one of these was missing, I think the water sewer committee report was missing. We will get that in the next agenda packet. And the last report is the management report. It's late, so I won't go through all of our upcoming events, but we do have a lot of upcoming events. For Night Live this Friday, moving in the park, and Juneteenth next weekend. So lots of good stuff going on, entertainment here in June and July. Well, for those of you that are still with us, NCDOT is still taking public comment on the I-85 Watin project. So if you haven't looked at that, they've got a great website with renderings of what the interchange is at X-26 and 27 will look like, as well as the rest of them. They are still considering the Michigan left at the intersection of Wilkerson and Main Street as part of X-26 redesign. So if you have thoughts on that, the UTE would like to hear them. They may not like to hear them, but they're going to hear them.
Evidently, Larry, Larry Riley says these are in New Jersey a lot, and he said they work really well, because I was surprised when they said that, that's what first I talked, it had personal involvement with it.
Well, do we have any in Jersey? I don't remember any.
That's been a long time ago.
This is, please, I leave. I'm not saying I'm...
Why, if I leave in New Jersey, I'll...
So I am gonna ask for a special meeting to wrap up this year's motion amendments on June 24th. Let me confer with Michelle to see if we can get those ready for June 17th, so we don't have to meet back to back all day. So stay tuned on that, we'll try to do that on the 17th. That's all that I have.
I'd like to make a comment to Phil, you and Joey, you guys have done a tremendous job, I admire you all so much. It's great, it's really great. Especially the people moving out of the middle of the sun, shady area, definitely great. All right. Other bits? Ryan, you want to start with you?
No, I was just asking you more updates on the Greer Gaston Corporation, but I think between last month and this month, you guys should have a pretty good understanding of what's going on there, and certainly want to thank Mark for all of his work and efforts. You read about the five hundred jobs coming to Old Posada Convent, and you read about the light rail, you read about the, you know, three hundred and fifty million dollar hospital project, and you think this happened by accident. Well, they don't. They're all very intentional, it's a group effort by a lot of people, so...
Pleasure to be here.
Richard? Okay, we have a few things. First one, I talked to a couple of people on Ferris Avenue who I know, and David, you might be familiar with this tree, for those of you that trains at that road. There's a massive tree that's literally leaning right over the road. I'm surprised it hasn't fallen, it's not a dead tree, but it's gonna take out the power lines when it does fall. But it is a falling hazard, people are concerned about driving under it, you know, in a hurry to the time. So I don't know if that's something that the city would do, is call due power out there, have them examine that tree and see if it is a threat to those power lines, if they can cut it down, or if the city can.
What's the, is it in the bottom of the hill?
Yeah, it's kind of in the bottom of the hill. I mean, when you see that tree, you'll be surprised, it hasn't pulled over, you've got nothing come over it.
Peter's there?
Yeah, it's a bad tree.
We'll look at that, do a GIS on it, it's in the right of way, obviously.
It's in the right of way, it's right up letting the road, it's very close.
Then that would be a city issue, and we could probably do something coming in the July budget. We've got other trees that we're already scheduled for, come July, which we can grab the way, and then we can do that...
You may wanna have the call due power out on it, because they will take the trees and threaten the power lines if they, if they look at it as a hazard or a risk.
Might take the rest out of Old Street, too.
Second item, we are coming into the P six point O with the GCL MPO, sub-middle period for candidate projects, sub-middle periods between June 1st and June 30th. As you know, Randy Gates, I mean, the philosophy there is, is to pick high-quality projects that have a high probability of making it through the process. So that's something that our transportation committee might wanna meet on with staff, and also maybe bring in Randy and her expertise to help us grade those. Next item, you know, I went up to listen to last month's recording of the city council meeting, and we got a glitch in case there's a problem, or it's a one-off. The recording stopped at an hour and thirty-six minutes. That meeting at the ten o'clock is essentially three hours long, so we don't have the back half. I don't know if that's been captured anywhere and can be added in, but I was surprised, there was something I wanted to listen to in the back end of the meeting that wasn't, wasn't available. And this is just, it came from a conversation, this is just for a thought. Some folks were talking about the traffic on South Point Road, how bad it is, and a conversation of light rail and Wilkerson Boulevard came up, which led them to speculate to me, and I said, I'll bring it forward, you know, it's possible there will be federal funding for this, it's possible the MPO can look at it. But just to get, get out there about the possibility of a monorail or something like that going down South Point Road into the peninsula, which could then carry commuters from the peninsula to the parking ride where the light rail in Charlotte is. And I think if you can demonstrate a need for that, there is federal funding later for the light rail and monorail. So anyway, that's just an idea, conceptually.
Just four items more for update for next month. If you and our attorney would look, if there's anything we can do in the city with a burning burned-out building, a Wilkerson Boulevard, because we do not have a fifty... burned-out building, a Wilkens Boulevard, because we do not want to have a $50 million project start and have that there, that we something, that we need to improve, and practice something, figure out something. Also, I had the middle school do a stakeholder survey, and they're opening students, and that does include a 15th graders at the high school, so we still have substantial number of those as we're considering in our parks. The third thing is if you guys would make sure at Oak Street that they get that compacted properly, inspect and get that repaid, we spend substantial amount of money, we do not want to run into the same problem we're running into on Stowe Road at this point, because something was not addressed appropriately. And last, if we can update next month with regard to our sewer situation down South Point Road, because, and of course, this is personal, because I have a community interest in it, we may jeopardize projects that 200 acre tract should be, we should be more accommodating, I think. So I want to know next month if I can understand that.
And also, I want to mention Martha, you guys, your class got an award, didn't it? Martha's class, came in, what, third in the state, I think? For his, you want to tell us a little bit about what you did? I think that's great.
We, I must say, just participate in a stock market game, so at Cass and Dave, we were in Capitol Hill Challenge when I was at Cass and Christian in the fall, we were in another stock market game. So mine was first, and we were third in the state with the Cass and Christian team. So that's why, it does not mean the teachers have done a good job, it means we have kids who are making good calls as far as what to invest in, so it's cool to just watch that.
What a compliment.
I just threw a dart inside the newsroom.
Well, they did better than that.
That's a, that's a jerk, by the way.
Yeah, the only thing I want to clarify with Councilman Turner, when I voted in favor of resolution, I didn't vote in reference to that bill, I voted in reference to the P E D study in support of our local agency, and that we maintain it as a private project enterprise, privatization of it. So I just want to clarify that. Councilman Turner felt like I voted on something that wasn't there yet, that was not doing that.
And I'd like to mention, David, the, over there with the bylaws is, there's trees that are over the lines over there. I'm not sure whose lines those are, but I'm concerned about them, because if those trees pull those lines down, it might be a power outage or blackout or something like that that might be pretty devastating on that corner right there, especially to this...
You're trying on the Boulevard.
Yeah, you know, when you turn, we're coming up the Boulevard, when you turn right to go toward the abbey?
Yes.
There's trees that are over power lines down there, so we need to really take a look at that and see.
Obviously, I have to be careful, when I call about the trail fair, so hopefully you get them to, this modern power lines, like you said, just if we can't get deep decisions.
Good deal. Thanks, Dave. All right.
Make a motion with your jury.
Got a motion with your jury? Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do your jury.
Brian?
Brian?
I really don't know.
Every stock purchase...
Oh, wow!
Yeah, it's a big statement.
Yeah.
Brian?
Yeah?
Brian?
I tried, I tried to talk to you, but...
What are you doing?
Yeah, we got, we got a little interrupted, but...
I got involved with it in Sydney last...
I'm going to make sure I get your name on it.
I was like, I meant to play...
I never told you that. I never dated your daughter, and...
What's your...
Yeah, yeah, wait a minute. Hey, I don't have...
Don't.
No. I tried to do that several months ago, and I don't...
It never imagined, you know, there's actually some...
Very good.
Thank you, Neil Moore.
Just for you.
See, and I'm wrong.
You're wrong.
Neil Moore, okay.
You said more is less, right?
More is less.
Yeah, but you always...
There you go. I'm...
Are you giving out money? I want money.
No, I'm having to sign some documents. Thank you.
Woo!
All right, Mayor, you want to sign now?
All right, I was over there trying to crank you up a couple times, you know, speaking.
Mayor, you want to just come in the morning and see me?
Whatever you want to do.
Yeah, let's just do it in the morning. Adrian, you have that on a flash drive, the PowerPoint? Because I put it in there for Jamie's note, PowerPoint.
That's a good way, that's a good trend. We've got to figure out what digitized the city manager show, and then we can...
Get rid of me.
Tried to get some previous 5.0s, we can't do that. You still hurting?
I'm still here.
Good, good.
So you work okay?
Uh, yeah.
All right. You're a good man, Chad.
I don't tell that, you're a big head.
My hand's big enough, isn't it?
I was trying to crank you up a couple times. You had a speaking. That old tech one.
Mayor, you want to just come in the morning and see me?
Whatever you want to do.
Yeah, let's just do it in the morning. Adrian, you have that on a flash drive, the PowerPoint? Because I put it in there for Jamie's note, PowerPoint.
That's a good way, that's a good trend. We've got to figure out what digital and some city managers show up, and then we can...
Get rid of me.
Tried to get some...
I can do something.
Five point O's, you can't handle that.
You still hurting?
I'm still here.
Good, good.
So you work okay?
Uh, yeah.
All right. You're a good man, Chad.
I don't count that, you're a big head.
My hand's big enough as a...